I'd like to call the meeting of the LaRue Island School Board to a close. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Beal? Mrs. Borts, President. Mr. DeAndrea?
Here.
Mrs. Glad?
Here.
Mrs. Kalich?
Here.
Mr. Lammon? Mr. Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Renzi?
Here.
Mr. Suffolk?
Present.
Eight present, one absent.
I'd like to stand for the moment. Attention.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
The agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would like to recognize LaRue Island's stakeholders. If anybody has a comment on the agenda, please stand and give us your name and should item on the agenda. Anybody at this time? Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 29th, 2020, and a special meeting of July 20th, 2020.
I'll make a motion.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of attendance records of committee meetings and work sessions, the health, nutrition, and food committee meeting of July 16th, 2020, and the work session of August 10th, 2020.
Motion.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to have an executive session now? This is fact. One other executive session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to have an executive session.
Contractual and personnel?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
This time we go to the... Motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Wall, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Suffolk. I'd like everybody to know that pending the outcome of our meeting tonight, there will be a welcome letter going out to all of our staff tomorrow outlining our schedules, what the framework of our learning day will be like, and it will also have a list of, a partial list of the mitigation mechanisms that we put in place in order to keep everybody safe. Additionally, once that letter goes out, we will also be posting a letter on our website for our community that will also spell out what the learning day is going to look like, and again, with a partial list of our mitigation mechanisms that we have in place tonight or in place thus far to prepare for school opening. I have just two more things. With COVID-19, we kind of got away from some of the good things that have happened in schools prior to us closing. I would like to congratulate Randy Miller and his team for a Project Lead the Way grant. Each elementary school received $20,000 for two years, or $10,000 for every two years, and that's a great addition to our elementaries. Good job, Randy. I just want to make sure that we're acknowledging the things that we're doing and trying to help kids. We are a premier education establishment. I think we're doing a great job on educating kids. With that, Mr. DeAndrea would like to talk a little bit about some of the mitigation mechanisms that we are implementing, and I'm going to put or hand the floor over to Mr. DeAndrea.
The one thing that the board had to consider is whether we're going to reopen or not in light of the other districts that have selected different avenues. We had, all of us got the CARES Act money, and with our money, we chose to do things that would improve the environment and make it safer for the staff and the students. So we, I'm going to read quite a few of these, so just bear with me. We did improved communications through signs and training regarding COVID-19 preventive measures throughout the schools, so when the teachers and everybody returned, they'll see different signs, and there's going to be different traffic patterns, different ways to walk around the building. The visitors entering the building will be significantly limited to emergencies only. Individuals who are permitted to enter will have temperature checks and will complete a screening protocol, and that also goes for the students that arrive late. There's plexiglass dividers are being installed in identified areas. A few examples would be the main office, the cafeteria lines, and the nurse's office. Schools will receive additional hand sanitizer stations throughout the building, wipes, and masks for any student or staff member who needs them will be available there. Since COVID is an airborne virus, air purifying systems are being purchased to install in kitchens, nurses, offices, and high-traffic areas. In addition, these units can be, these units have ozone capability to thoroughly clean any space that may be contaminated by person with COVID symptoms, and those are, I believe, portable, so if it happens to be a classroom, they can move and clean that air in that classroom. In addition to daily scheduled cleaning of the buildings, high-touch surfaces will be disinfected regularly. Drinking fountains will be turned off. Twice a week, all buildings will receive a deep cleaning in addition to regularly scheduled cleaning. Deep cleaning will include spraying every building with electrostatic sprayers. Our 21st Century Elementary after-school program will be moved to virtual or remote learning in order to allow the buildings to be effectively cleaned after school. Bus drivers will assign students to sit spaced out to be maximum, to the maximum extent feasible with the understanding that masks will be required of students while on the bus. Buses will be disinfected on a regular basis. Any bus that has been contaminated by person with COVID symptoms will be pulled out of service in order to be disinfected before returning to the fleet. Fifty-two percent of the parents reported that they will be using the bus to transport their children. That will help with the spacing. At the high school, additional driving passes will be sold to limit the number of students riding the bus. Each school is implementing new entrance procedures. Procedures will be communicated as well as put on the website. Air purifying systems will be installed in the kitchens to regularly clean and disinfect the air. Students will be offered a grab-and-go lunch or breakfast each morning. Students will be required to distance themselves when sitting to the maximum extent feasible per Department of Health guidelines. Each school is implementing additional lunch areas and/or additional lunch periods, and these new procedures will be communicated to the parents and the students. Prepackaged silverware, condiments, and food will be used as much as possible, and there will be no salad bar. Individuals will be encouraged to sanitize or wash their hands prior to and after eating. In the classrooms, additional furniture will be removed to allow for as much space as possible to assist in spreading desks apart. Classroom configuration will be altered for maximum social distancing as feasible. Air conditioners have been installed in the elementary classrooms. Classrooms and common areas will be ventilated with an additional circulation of outdoor air when possible. Symptom screening will be done by parents and guardians at home each morning before the school day. No child with symptoms will be sent on the bus or brought to school. Random checks of temperatures will be done again as students arrive late. All district staff will perform a symptom screen on themselves prior to leaving for work and will stay at home if they're ill. Students and staff will go to a nurse immediately if feeling symptomatic. New procedures and markings will be put in the buildings to limit high-traffic areas or congestion, from congestion when feasible. Staff and students will be required to wear masks per Pennsylvania's order requiring universal face coverings. And the other thing is, we have the fact that you'll be able to start out online, and if you don't want to go online, you can come in person, and then if you want to go back online, whatever, if the parents don't feel comfortable sending their kids to school, they don't have to. They're on online programs in the service schools that we have provided within the district.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Appreciate it. And I think as a side note to that, I'd like to commend all of the administration, all the teachers, talk to parents, and the board themselves. You guys have stood by us and supported us in this effort, and it's been a great team effort, and everybody deserves to have a hand in it, and I think that we will be able to keep our students safe and our staff safe when we return to school. Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. That concludes my report, Mr. Suffolk.
Thank you. Academic Foundation, Mrs. Kalich?
Not at this time.
Are they still functioning?
Not at this time. The work is on hold.
Oh, thank you. I was wondering, because I hadn't heard much about the...
Everything's on hold right now.
Thank you. Strategic Plan of the Work Policy Committee, Mr. Feather?
Yes, I'd like to put in a form of a motion, approve policy for attendance and meeting via electronic communications. Exhibit A.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion for the revision to student use of tobacco and nicotine policy. That's exhibit B.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to put a form of motion, or make the motion, revision to revise the employee use of tobacco and nicotine policy. That's exhibit C.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Strategic Committee, Mrs. Beck?
C1A, approve the pillars of learning found in exhibit D, and in case you don't know what those are, there are four of them. Active teacher engagement, checking for understanding, creating an environment of respect and rapport, and maximizing instructional opportunity. I'd like to put that into a form of a motion. Second.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
C2A, approval of intermediate Unit 1 services agreement. I'd like to put that into a form of a motion. Second.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to put it into the form of a motion to approve the revision to the school calendar for the 2020-2021 school year, making November 3rd election day now an off-day for settlement agreement.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to put it into the form of a motion to approve the emergency instructional time template per PPD requirement, which is in the handout.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to put it into the form of a motion, who cares, and PCCD grant updates.
That's just information.
Oh, that's informational, sorry.
Thank you.
C6A, I would like to put it into the form of a motion to approve the fall curriculum for California University student Ashley Healy. She will be beginning August 18th, well, she'll be beginning at a later date, we'll be changing the date, and continuing through December 11th, 2020, and must attend a minimum of 28 hours over at least four days a week. Nicole Boda will be the supervising teacher.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I would like to put it into the form of a motion to approve the fall internship for California University student Paige Long. She will be beginning August 31st, 2020, and continuing through December 11th, 2020, and must attend a minimum of 28 hours over at least four days each week. Jacqueline Hughes will be the supervising teacher.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to put it into the form of a motion to approve the fall internship for California University student Hannah Crawford. She will be beginning August 31st, 2020, and continuing through December 11th, 2020, and must attend a minimum of 28 hours over at least four days each week. Paula Novuliski will be the supervising teacher.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
C9A, I would like to put it into the form of a motion to approve Jordan Jones, an LBI student, for an internship this fall to complete 150 hours of technology internship under the direction of Mr. Randy Miller.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Suffolk, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Retsing?
Thank you, Mr. Suffolk. Well, as we all know, our elementary schools were, developed air conditioning, all the classrooms, and those projects have been completed. Correct? Net? Complete. All buildings have been tested?
Yes, all of them completed.
Also, our daily maintenance repairs are going on. Fire alarms have been inspected at all six of our facilities, and I guess the biggest thing was the air conditioners. Elementary kitchen, the air conditioners are on order, and I'm certain they'll be placed upon receipt. Correct? Yeah, that's all I am, Mr. Suffolk.
Thank you, Mr. Retsing. Finance, Budget, and Taxation Committee, Mr. Reddick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bank reconciliation toward summary report found in exhibit...
Second. Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of bills found in exhibit F.
Second. Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
The investment report is informational. I'd like to take a motion to approve the federal report found in exhibit H.
Second. Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the student activity funds and athletic funds found in exhibit...
Aye.
Second. Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
No.
Seven aces, one net.
I'd like to make a motion for the, to approve the adoption of the 2020-2021 final FAIC County Career and Technical Institute budget in the amount of $7,264,679. For Ohioan's share of this budget is $1,56,116.
Second. Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Health and Nutrition Foods Committee, Mrs. Glad?
I'd like to put it into the form of a motion, the cafeteria report found in exhibit J. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to put it into the form of a motion, the selection of the milk, dairy, and bread and other product vendors. Second.
Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
FS3 is informational. The free and reduced lunch applications will once again be web-based this year. Parents will be able to go to the site and apply online. Information will also be sent home with students. If you do not have access to a computer, please contact your building principal or Mr. Johns, our food service director. That concludes my report, Mr. Suffolk.
Thank you, Mrs. Glad. Security and Transportation, Mrs. Beal?
1A, I'd like to motion to approve the first student roster first list and then tell them the answer first list for the 2021 school year. Thank you. Okay.
Second. Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Who's your report, Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Thank you. Human Resources Committee, Mrs. Kalich?
Personnel and Labor Relations, professional personnel, P1A, I'd like to put it into the form of a motion, approve substitute teachers for the 2020-2021 school year found in exhibit L, regular certified substitutes and emergency certified substitutes. Second.
Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
P2A, I'd like to put it into a form of a motion, except with regret, the retirement of Mrs. Eileen Crutchman, gifted teacher at the middle school effective August 31st, 2020. Mrs. Crutchman has 21-plus years of dedicated service to the district. Second.
Question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to give the expression of gratitude to the students and the lives, and we wish her the very best. Thank you.
I'd like to put it into a form of a motion, except with regret, the resignation of Mrs. Michelle Swinberg, Spanish teacher at the high school, effective immediately. Mrs. Swinberg has two years of dedicated service to the district. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
We'd like to thank her for her service also, and wish her well in doing government.
This is just informational. Professional employee A will be on a leave from August 18th, 2020, until the end of the first semester, using accumulated days in FMLA. Informational, professional employee B will be on leave from August 18th, 2020, until December 16th, 2020, using accumulated days in FMLA. P31, informational, Mrs. Hafren Strange, first-grade teacher at Marshall Elementary School, will be returning to her position at the beginning of the 2020-2021 school year. P4A, I'd like to put it into a form of a motion, approve permission of the following individuals to be placed as long-term substitutes in the positions indicated found in exhibit M. Second.
Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
Support personnel, P5A, I'd like to put it into a form of a motion, approve substitute employees for support personnel for the 2020-2021 school year found in exhibit N. Second.
Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Kalich?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mrs. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Borts?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Mr. Suffolk?
Yes.
Eight aces.
P6I, informational, paraprofessional realignment is still being conducted pending results of parent instructional choices and possible postings. This tentative list will be replaced with an updated paraprofessional list for the 2020-2021 school year, will be presented at the next meeting for approval, found in exhibit O. That's it. That concludes my report, Mr. Suffolk.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Frank Gousen. Under informational, employee A, employee B, why wouldn't we not vote on that to be part of the minutes?
They're mandatory, they're contractual. If they can't be approved, there's...
I just thought somewhere in the record book, it has to be that these individuals were granted...